Sorry, it was always in my head, being out there and helping people and being on the front.
In the summer of 2006, while serving in the demilitarized. Fracturing her skull, untr-
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm gonna thank everyone in advance for their patience, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We will be rising for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. And if I have Mr. Bucky Scott online to take you all the role.
Ms. Albright. Ms. Albright?
Here, I couldn't unmute myself, I'm here.
Oh, great. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Okay, Ms. Murray? Or no, that's Mr. Murray, excuse me. Is he there? Okay, absent. Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. B. Scott, that's me, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yeah.
And Ms. Olafson?
Here.
Okay, we have one absent.
Okay, so let's start with 1D, which is our, we are gonna take our, first of all, I hear an echo in this room, so if I ever feel, if you ever feel like I'm sound distracted, that's why, well, it's one of the reasons why. We need to have, we, right now, in this room, we only have Mr. Brian Supers, our attorney, Ms. Dr. Cooper, our superintendent, Mr. Scott Matts, who is making this sound somewhat organized as our tech guru, and me, Julia Olafson, everyone else is here by, and we are all six feet apart. I promise you, we are, but we all have our own computers, so if you ever hear any feedback, that's probably why. All the other board members and administration who are participating are here remotely, which brings us to 1D, we do need to have a motion to suspend the application of our rules, Board Policy 006.1, for attendance, board attendance by teleconferencing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry, I didn't hear seconded, if someone-
Second.
Second. Okay, and for the, those listening, normally, we are only allowed to have a limited number of board members attend per teleconference. Of course, with our situation right now, everyone but me is teleconferencing, and we would need to suspend these rules by vote if, to make this board meeting actually count. So to have, make, have any of, any of the things that we vote on be able to be enforced, so do any of the board have any questions before we vote on this? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Scott, can we do, do a vote on that?
Sure. Ms. Albright?
Here.
That's great.
Sure.
Isn't it yes or no?
It's yes, it's always yes.
I'm glad you're here. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. We, Mr. Murray is not here. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olafson?
Yes.
Okay, it passes, we only had one abstain, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. So, moving on to our partisners for public participation, this is also gonna be kind of a, of a work in progress. We do allow participation, of course, you're, and you're all here, some of you may have things you wanna say, but at the voting meeting, that happens at the beginning of the meeting and at the very end of the meeting. So I'm gonna give you the chance to do that. If, I'm gonna be lenient with the three minutes, but please, you know, we are, you know, we do have a lot of people listening tonight, so if I do end up cutting you off, I'm not doing it to make, to not, so you're not heard, I'm just doing it so we can get to everybody. So we can move on to presentations by the public. Do we have anyone interested in doing that?
Julia?
Yes.
I have a question, these meetings have a raise hand, maybe that might be a way to orderly get them, if somebody wants to speak, they can just hit the raise hand button, you can call them. Bottom right-hand corner.
My tech guru says we can give it a shot.
Where's that? I don't even see the hand.
Bottom right-hand side.
It just says leave meeting.
Is it reactions?
No, you have to hit participate, participants, and then it'll, it'll open up all the participants, and then under the bottom right-hand corner.
Oh, it does say raise hand, wow.
All right.
All right.
I was trying to help.
All right. I am looking through the participants, do you see if anyone has, would? I don't see. Oh, I see it. Okay, so I, I'm going with Lori. You're gonna have to give your, when you start, we're gonna, you're gonna give your name and your address, and then go ahead and say what you have to say. I'm unmuting you, I'm trying to.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, so my name is Laura Calendar, I'm at 341 Rose Cliff Drive, I'm currently an employee at AIC. I just wanted to, I just have a question, whether the hourly employees will be getting paid.
Okay. We are gonna be voting on that tonight. I feel, I, I have very strong feelings about, about that, and you're gonna hear, hear about him in just a second, but you know, everybody else on the board gets a vote as well, but it is an agenda item. By the end of the night, we, we should have an answer to that. This is an unprecedented situation, so we are, you know, we're committed to our, I think the board is committed to the, to the staff, where I, you know, to the staff, as well as the students. But we do, you know, we do have to do, I know you've been hanging in limbo without an answer until this board meeting, so hopefully, by the end of the night, we'll have, we'll, we'll, you can put some of your concerns to rest.
Okay, once you guys decide and have an answer, how will we be notified?
If, if you're not here, there will be communication from the administration, probably brief, a brief, like, a brief communication, at least by tomorrow morning. I'm, I'm getting a nod. And so you, you will be notified by administration by tomorrow morning, if you, if you don't know, by listening tonight.
Okay. Okay, and just on a, as a, as a parent of a student who has special needs, it has been very difficult to get any kind of academic enrichment work from the district. I have been teaching him on my own, getting my, gathering my own materials, so I just wanted to- I, I can actually speak to that, there is no new education that is allowed to be occurring at this point during the two-week period. So anything that you should be doing with him would be review at this point, we were not instructed or allowed to give out any new information, so that-
Yeah, I'm not asking for new information, I'm asking for any information. Any.
I know that there's stuff on Schoology for our regular education students. The kids are doing, I know they're not marked, I get that, but as a special education parent, I have not received a thing.
Yeah, I, and I do, I understand, you know, where you're coming from as a parent, it's, I, I I don't, I don't think I am prepared to, like, solve that problem for you right now, so, but you and I might get, get together offline after this is over, if that's okay.
Okay, great.
Great, okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for your comments. Do I, I do not see any other raised hands at the moment. Okay, so now, moving on to the next thing, which is the superintendent's report. All meetings are canceled, all committee meetings were canceled through, through next, through the register this week. I don't know if we have anything else.
Report.
Okay. All right. So we do have agenda edits. That's the next thing, number 2A. And I need to get to my agenda edits. Do I have to read them out loud? They are posted as a separate document. Okay, so we do have agenda edits, they've been listed as a separate document with onboard docs. After the agenda for this meeting, there's some finance consent items and and two personnel item. And two contracts, it looks like, to discuss. Again, everybody, sorry, work in progress. All right. So those are there for you to look at, including all the, all the attach, attachments are all there. Under consent items, we have consent items 3, 1 through 18. Do I have a, do I have a? Oh. Let me say, before we, before we vote on this consent document, I believe I will ask that we make a motion to approve items 3, 1 through 18, and removing number 11, and I will tell you why after we, after we make that motion.
Profession, one of the only professions that say that, like, we can never get involved with a former client, ever, regardless of how long it's been, versus like-
I, I lost you, I couldn't hear you. Bev?
It wasn't Bev.
Oh, oh, Jen?
No, it wasn't me.
Okay. All right, so number, so do I have a board member making a motion for? Yeah, 1, 1 through 18 minus-
No 11.
I second.
Okay, and let me just say, the only reason is that the, the paving contractor that we went through with is Haynes and Kendall House. And I, I'm gonna have to abstain from voting on that because I have a business relationship with them. I thought that, I thought that Mr. Strobel seconded, am I wrong?
I, I made the vote, Bucky seconded.
Yeah, so I got Mrs. Strobel and, and myself.
Okay, thank you.
In that order.
Do we have any discussion from the board on those items? Hearing none. Can we have, can we have a vote?
Sure. I'm trying to read my notes here. Do, I guess what I'm looking for, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items 3, 1 through 18, removing number 11? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Murray abstained, Mr. Stro-
I would-
Okay, Mr. B. Scott?
Scott, I would just note that Mr. Murray is absent, he's not abstaining.
Thank, thank you, sir. I'm glad that's clear. Ms., Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
I won't do that again. Oh, Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olafson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so with those approved, can we get a motion for 2A11?
Okay.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Strobel and Mrs. Albright? Do you have, do you guys have any discussion on that one, that I will not take part in?
Do we need, I'm sorry, Julie, don't we need to remove the TBD from the blank?
Oh, I think that, I, I think that that is part of the agenda edit.
Okay.
Let me go, let me go over there. Yeah, it's, it's under 2, under, on the, on the agenda edit list, 2A 21 is to replace, to be determined with H and K group, and the attachment for that is there.
Okay, let me see if I can find that.
Oh sure, no problem.
I have multiple emails on agenda edits for this.
Well, while Mr. Miller's looking for that, do any of the other board members have any comments on that one? Mr. Strobel and Ms. Albright?
I do not, I just, was there, was there a document, I didn't, I didn't see it, maybe I couldn't find it, that showed the bidders and then the, the contract amount?
The, the attachment to the board, the board agenda edits list has the paving ta, paving bid tabulation. It is the tiniest font imaginable, but you know, if you can-
It has to be done, it's, and I know that they, they went-
No, no, it's fine.
I, I'll look at it later.
And Kathleen, Miss Haynes has indicated that Haynes and Kendall House is the, is the low bidder, lowest responsible bidder for this project.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller, were you able to open that up?
I was, yeah, it's in the other board documents.
Yeah, so did you have any questions?
Yep.
Kathleen might be able to answer?
No.
Okay, not me. So, so with that, Mr. Scott, can we have a vote on that one?
Julie, just so I'm, I'm clear, we're, we're talking about, I know what we're talking about, but it's 2A11, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I, I heard a different number earlier.
Is it 3A11?
It is 3, 311.
311, yes. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I forgot the A. Three, okay. Mr. Strobel?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olafson?
Abstained.
Okay. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Five pass.
All right, thank you, sir. So personnel consent items, as amended, I guess, because there's an, there's an edit. 1 through, through many, 1 through 5, is that right? No, that's not right, 1 through 3. Do I have a motion for that?
Is that one more time, is that for 4?
1 through 3.
4, 1 through 3.
I think she's talking about, oh, I don't wanna speak for you, sorry.
No, it's fine. But under personnel, oh, yes, it is for, it's for A1 through 3.
Correct, I, I do have a question.
Do you wanna make a motion first?
Do we have to make a motion before we question something?
Yeah, before we discuss it.
All right, I'll make the motion and we accept it.
Okay, sorry.
I'll second it.
Well, and, and now, sir, what is your question?
My question is, the increase in hours, and what was that for?
For which one?
Number 4, 32, 322. It was an increase in hours from 6 to 7.5, it's just a question, it was, I'm not, I'm not opposing, I just had a question in my mind, what?
Oh, that is, because of the change in the copy center being more centrally located, is spending a little bit more time going between the different buildings now.
Okay. Gotcha. And has that changed, did that change it from a part-time position to a full-time?
That's a question for Kathleen.
No, it was, no, it was, it did not change it from a, to a full-time, it was already a full-time at the 6 hours.
Okay, that's fine. And then, the other question was, it was an EIP facilitator position? That was number 5, I believe.
Okay.
What is, what is, what exactly is that, and is that a new position?
Yes, that was a position that, that we've had conversations now, at our last committee of the whole meeting, and the job description was listed there and-
I just didn't remember, Dr. Cooper, I'm sorry, I just wanted, so, I, it's, you're, it rings a bell now. Okay, yep, I, I have no change to my motion to approve.
I'm sorry, to, to follow up, is there a person in that position, or is this just for the position?
It's, it's a position that through reallocating the resources that we have currently, it's not adding an additional number to the CBA, but it's reallocating what we currently have through our resident retirements that we have now this year, so it's just reallocating one of those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Mr. Scott?
Okay, so we're, we're do, for A1 through 3. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yeah.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Olafson?
Yes.
Okay. Sick votes. Yes.
Okay, and this is one that I actually have to ask, we have 2, for number 5, we have 2 bidders, do we make the motion and then amend it to put somebody's name there after we're done, or do we discuss it before we make the motion?
I would suggest that a motion be made for one or the other of the responding proposers, and then that would, with a second, then that would open it up for discussion, and if you wanted to amend it to replace that named party, you can do that.
Julia?
There's an, is there administrative recommendation?
Julia? I, I have a question before, if you're moving on, did we vote on, we didn't vote on 4, 4, 4, and 5, we did voted 4, 1 through 3.
4, 3 includes 1 through 5, so we voted-
It's not 1 through 3, I got you, I'm sorry, my bad.
Yep, Dr. Cooper made the same, made the same error, and I'm calling him out.
So, yeah, just
Go back and-
clarification of the record, it was, the last vote was on 4.1 through 4.3.
Yes.
And then isn't there-
Now, we're up to
4, 4?
4.1, I don't know if there's a proposal for one or the other.
I have a question, did we, did we vote on volunteers, and did we vote on the motion to, for the IP, because they look like-
Yes.
Yes, we did, they were part of 4.3.
They're not listed that way.
They are.
Yeah, and now I see it, I see it now, my bad. I just wanna make sure we're doing, we're right.
So, the board members, you, you heard Mr. Supers' recommendation on how to, how to word this any voting motion, we have 2, we have 2 companies that have put in for custodial bid. We have Halter, and we have S, S,
C.
C. One of them is very obviously the lower bidder, I, I, as Mr. Supers made a suggestion that we should ask administration before we vote, before we put a motion forward, to find out if administration has a recommendation before we move forward, so I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, we do, our, our recommendation is SSC.
So the requested motion would be motion to approve SSC to, to award a contract SSC for the district-wide custodial services pursuant to the prior RFP.
Okay, so I, so if someone would like to make that motion,
I'll make that.
Then we could, then we can ask the administration some questions about, if you want a little bit more of a fulsome answer as to what their considerations were. And if you don't like those answers, and we wanna switch to the other one to approve, or if we wanna table it, you know, we can make that, we can make that change, so if someone would like to make the motion to approve the 5A1 with, with the name SSC replacing to be determined as Mr. Supers recommended.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So, Mr. Strobel, you, you, you're the first, is there a second?
I'll second.
Who is that, Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so does any, do any, any of the board members wanna ask either Ms. Haynes or Mr. Dr. Cooper about, about SEC versus Halter?
Yeah, I'd love to hear about this, because this isn't, this is the first time I'm being informed of this, because as of last, we were giving Interstate more time to fix their issues.
Right, yeah, I was gonna ask as well, did you- Right, yeah, I was going to ask as well, did we offer, send the RFP to Interstate, and they chose not to respond?
Mrs. Haynes?
Do you want me to go?
On to that?
Yes. On the Friday prior to the school closing, we were on the phone with Interstate, me, Steve Biggerstaff. They had Rachel Weller and the father, the owner of the company, and also the manager that comes into the meetings all the time, David. He came in and we were all on the phone, and it, and it was quite an intense conversation. They basically said they weren't going to come in and support Daniel Boone during the COVID, cleaning stuff that we needed additional staffing until we paid them everything they wanted to be paid, even when it wasn't due. They have not supplied me with, per the contract, they're supposed to supply me with certified payroll. They have yet to supply me with that. The payroll that they did send me, I was, I discovered there were some fallacies in it where they were giving me staff on vacation and sick time. I was paying sick time and vacation time, not actual hours worked. So there was a lot of disagreement in the billing. I settled up billing to the best that I could, that I could feel that it was equitable to both parties, just to make sure that we were going to be supported at least for the weekend, because we still were uncertain whether the schools were going to be closed at that time. But to leave us hang like they did, I think it just showed the kind of company that they were. And it was very, it's a very scary situation when you're in a situation like this, and you can't depend on the company to pull what they're supposed to be doing, when they weren't going by the contract the whole time.
The one comment I would like to add is that if, obviously if we approve an award of contract to SSC, we will need to also take an action to provide Interstate a 90-day notice of termination pursuant to their contract. So.
Are we confident that if we do that, that they will come in and work in the 90 days?
I was going to say, like, who's going to, what do you think those three months are going to be like after you award them 90 days?
That's, I mean, their contract provides for a 90-day notice of termination without, without cause. Although we feel that there, there is cause for a termination, the safer way to do that is to issue a 90-day notice of termination for convenience or without cause. There is a performance bond which requires, which guarantees Interstate's performance. Interstate would be required to continue with the services over that 90 days. I can't guarantee that they will. If they don't, we would have to secure alternative services. But Interstate pursuant to its contract would be liable for those costs. And there's also a performance bond where surety would be guaranteeing Interstate's performance.
Okay, but if you've been saying for the last six months that they haven't been doing what they've been contracted to do, and you guys have not been satisfied with what they're doing, what's going to make them complete that task within the next 90 days?
There's nothing that can make them do it, but I can, I can assure you that if we talk to SSC, that they would be more than happy to help participate earlier in the process. The other thing that we have to drop as well, we're doing the good thing by giving them 90 days. I think there's plenty of evidence that says that they failed their contract, and the threat of not coming in at all allows for some of the stuff to happen. But I'm certainly, certainly the new company coming in, and I can't speak for them, but I'm going to make that assumption that they would come in and help us out.
Yeah, but then we'd be paying twice.
No, we don't have to pay them if they don't come. If they don't show, that's, that's the whole process. If nobody shows up, they're, they're not earning.
That's what I'm saying, though. They're going to show up. They just won't be doing any decent amount of work.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. And I mean, that would not be a reason.
Well, I mean, they saw the writing on the wall the last couple of meetings. I mean, I don't know.
Well, we could, we, if they fail to perform, that would be a basis for withholding their payment.
But we said that they've been failing to perform for the last six months.
And during that six-month period, we did exercise remedies by retaining outside third-party contractors to perform work that they weren't performing. And pursuant to their contract, they were backcharged for those costs.
Yes, they were.
I have a question. If we're claiming that they had fraudulent payroll, are we going to follow up on that?
We, we have exercised, actually, the contract, the remedy that we exercised regarding their, their failure to supply all of the contracted for labor hours. We had two options. The contract provided that we could withhold payment for hours not performed, or we could contract out for the services that they did not perform and backcharge them for those costs. The cost of contracting it out exceeded the deduction that they would have sustained for failure to meet the required hours. And it was my opinion that we were required to elect one or the other remedy. We couldn't, in effect, double-dip and exercise both remedies. So we exercised the remedy that was most favorable to the district. We are continuing to request that they provide their payroll, and we will continue to investigate that payroll with respect to future payments.
Okay.
Any other board discussion?
I guess then the question for the two that bid on the contract, what were the differences, and why did we choose to go with SSC?
When reviewing both bids, we actually looked at first, of course, you looked at the dollar amount and what they would be supplying. And I looked at more or less their experience. So when I made the recommendation, and we discussed it, me and Dr. Cooper, we, and Biggerstaff, we actually looked at it from the perspective of experience. And SSC has a lot of good recommendations. When we actually searched those prior, and the other districts that they've been in, and universities they've been in, that was the main conclusion, was they were the better ones.
I just think it's really interesting that at our last board meeting, it was specifically stated that we were just going to open this up to bid, but it didn't mean anything. It meant nothing. And now suddenly at our next meeting, we've already found another company to replace them. It's just interesting.
And it's approved before we get here?
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, why don't, why don't they?
Why don't they just do it without us?
You guys, yeah.
No, nothing's been approved. There's not been no contract. There's a recommendation to award a contract, but no contract has been awarded.
Well, there's been a lot of work done in the last week.
The RFP went out, which the board previously authorized.
Well, we authorized it because it was said that we were just doing this just in case they don't, they don't step up, just in case.
Beverly, they, they, they did step up and had a horrible conversation. If you want to, if you, if you want to have that conversation with Stephen, they threatened to not come in. It was, it was, that's what Kathleen just went over in the beginning of this. That's the reason the RFP went out in the beginning to just kind of like test the waters, because it was bad. It was, there was a lot of bad things going on. Steve, every month we had the same meeting.
Right, and we discussed that, that was, a lot of that was being held against them from the previous company. We've already discussed that.
And then, and then after that meeting, after we, and within the last couple, with the last week or so, they had, they had a separate meeting.
I don't have a dog in the race. I don't care. I'm just saying, it's awfully suspicious.
Trying to explain to you what happened. It's not suspicious at all.
Well, it kind of is.
I had to second that, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, a lot's changed in the past week.
No, I don't want.
There was a horrible meeting, but, yeah.
No, beyond horrible, they threatened to not come in.
Okay.
And there's other things that, there's other things that you're not, I guess.
Not privy to? Well, it's hard to vote on something I'm not privy to.
Want to go into the payroll issue? Beyond where you went?
Kevin, I, I'm just going to say this. I, I just think that we, we as a board weren't privy to a lot of this.
Exactly.
That's all. I don't think either one of us have anything in this. I don't care.
I could care less. I'm not related to any party. I don't care.
Okay, so there is the option to table this, table this and not vote on it right now.
Then I'd like to table it.
And I would, before, before you do, I just want, I just want you to hear just one bit of, okay. So Bev has voted to table it. Do I have a second on that?
Guess I'll second that.
Okay, so before we vote to do that, let me ask, let me just, there is something that, Mr. Suber's, there is some legal ramification to, if we made this decision tonight versus at another time, that I just want you guys to hear before we vote. So let me just let him say that.
The issue is, if we were proceeding under the 90-day termination provision, we would have to issue that notice prior to March 30 to satisfy the 90-day provision prior to July 1. If it was tabled, we could give them the 90-days notice, but it would just push out the commencement of the follow-up contract. So I believe that we could, it could be postponed. I think the timing in the presentation for this meeting was based upon the desire to commence the new contract on July 1.
Is there an issue if it's delayed into July?
I believe that our, our contract indicated that it could be delayed. I think that's something that we would, we would have to discuss with SSC. I don't know that they would object to pushing it back. It depends, you know, again, I'm not sure how long. If you're tabling it, I'm assuming that there's not going to be any action until the next board meeting. And I guess we could have a special voting meeting at the, on the 6th. So, yeah, you could do that. You could table it. We could schedule a special voting meeting on the 6th in the event that the board was ready to remove it from the table and place it back on the active, you know, up for an active vote. So there's a motion to table, and typically, once there's a motion to table, you don't, there's no discussion. But I've exercised my prerogative, just to give you that information. So there's a motion to table, and I would ask Mr. Scott to call, roll call vote for that motion.
Is there, is normally any situations, before we jump to conclusions, we would obviously go into an executive meeting if we were all sitting there. Why can't we go into that executive meeting? Because I made a motion that we approved this prior to the motion to second, to table it. So don't we have to deal with that motion first?
No, you, I'm sorry, you made it. There was a motion and a second to approve.
Correct.
Motion to table takes priority over that main motion. So the, the motion to table would be, is ripe for a vote. Unfortunately, I think the, the logistics of reconvening an executive session would be, might be difficult. It's, you know, I mean, being advised that it would be impractical if, you know, at a minimum to, to, you know, break for an executive session in light of the fact that we're participating virtually. But by, as a, as a matter of parliamentary procedure, the motion to table takes precedence over the main motion to award the contract.
I was mainly just, wanted to go into more of a discussion over the process, because we had, we have the person who's in charge of it, Steve Biggerstaff, who actually does the job and runs that piece of it. We have Brett Cooper, who we put in charge of the district to do these things. They've all spent time and hours on this thing, and we really not taken a chance to even talk to them, other than, you know, we're trying to move forward with something without our decision being made. So I think we should, is there any way we can talk about this now, and talk about all the things that were talked about in those meetings versus just, just the one payroll issue? Because this has been going on.
We could, I'd have to consult with Mr. Matt. I'm not sure what, you know, tech, you know, technologically is feasible at this time.
I guess, within the next couple of days, could we have a?
Okay, I've been advised that we would keep this public meeting open, and we would create another link for the call-in for the executive session. So we could, we could have that executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we will leave this, we will leave this open, but we are going to adjourn. I would say.
Recession.
We're going to, yeah, I'm sorry, we're going to recess for a couple of minutes. Everybody who wants to stay for the rest of the meeting is welcome to stay. I know we haven't gotten to any of the good stuff yet anyway. So I'm going to have, we're going to initiate a recess. Be back soon. Okay, we're back in session. That executive session was to discuss potential litigation matters. And I just have to pull the agenda back up. And so what was, before the board, was a motion to table 5A1. Does the board have any further conversation on that? Hearing none. Mr. Scott?
Okay, for motion 5A1, and Brian, maybe you can help me out with this, but I think for, first one is me, B. Scott, and I'm going to abstain. Is that correct, Brian?
You can do that if you choose to.
No, I don't mean, I'm not asking, I just want to say I'm saying it properly.
I'm waiting, who's?
I can't hear you.
I know, I'm trying to unmute, but I'm trying to get back in here. Let me just, what's your question, Bucky?
I was abstaining. Is that, is that, I've never done that before. Is that, is that what you call it?
Yeah, well, if you don't.
If I'm not voting for it. Yes or no? Just abstain, I'm stepping away.
Don't want to vote yes or no, you can abstain.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I was correct on that. Thank you. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Abstain.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
No.
Ms. Olafson?
Yes.
Okay, we have three yeses, one no, and two abstain.
So that means that the motion fails. Now we're going to vote on the original motion, which was.
We can have a conversation now about this, right?
About, about what's currently.
Original motion, right?
S is SSC as the, voting on a contract for SSC for the custodial.
Correct, but we can have conversation on it now that that motion's been made. I just want to make it, I just want to make sure I clearly understand what's happening here. The facilities manager that we hired, Stephen Biggerstaff, is in agreements with this. Dr. Cooper's in agreements with it, and the facilities committee member chair is in agreements with this. That's, I just want to make sure I understand that. That's, that's where we're at currently. Right now, we're going to vote on something that they, they all agree with. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is all a fairly new occurrence, though, right?
Yes.
Absolutely, because of what happened last week in the meeting.
Which nobody was made privy of, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have any other discussion? Mr. Scott?
So just so I'm clear, we're going to revote for SSC as a custodial, or giving them the contract?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Abstain.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, I'm gonna abstain. Ms. Olafson?
I'm gonna vote no, but that means that that motion also fails.
Correct.
Would have voted, and for the record, it would have failed if I had voted yes as well.
We need five.
Okay, so I think that right now we should, again, I have an echo in my ear, and it's throwing me off, so if no one else can hear that, that's why I keep stalling. I think that our next meeting is going to be a committee of the whole meeting on the 6th. There's a very good chance the setup will be just the same as this. So I don't know if we will have the ability to have a public, public meeting at that point. But, um.
For presentations?
I'm sorry, can't, can't we do presentations electronically?
Yes, that's what I was gonna suggest. I would like to, if, if, if no one from the board objects, I would like to direct the administration to ask the two, the two vendors to put together some sort of brief, what, I, I don't, I don't have a, a big, I don't have a big idea of what it would look like, whether it would be like a three-minute electronic presentation that they would submit to us, or if it would be some sort of question and answer situation that we would do online like this. But I think that there, that we should have something, some sort of forum like that between the two companies before we vote.
And the only thing I want to point out is if, if that's not at a public meeting, then it can be for informational purposes only, and there can be no board deliberation
Right.
regarding that.
And during, if we do it that way, Mr. Subers, would we be able to ask questions?
Yes, you can, you can ask, yeah, you can ask questions to elicit additional information or clarifying information from the vendors or proposers, but you cannot deliberate, you know, anything about who's going to get the contract.
Okay, so I, if, if the rest of the board has no objection, that's what I would like to direct the administration to, to make happen. And I'm sorry that we don't really have an idea what that's gonna look like because of the situation we're in, being at a distance. But we'll, we'll make it happen before we vote on it. Hopefully, we'll make it happen by the 6th, but it might not be, but, but it'll be before it shows up again for a vote. Do I have any objection from the board for that? It's not official, I just want to know what you guys think.
No, yeah, I, I think that will work, and it should be fairly easy to share presentations using WebEx.
I agree.
I agree, I'm good.
Okay. So moving on. I have 6A1 through 5. Is there an amend, is there amendment on this one? Yeah.
Yes, it's, there's an agenda.
Okay. Okay, so it's just as amended within the, within the text of, it's not, this number five here.
Two, three, and four.
Yeah. And it's not five, it's six, sorry. Am I right about that? 6A, 6A1 through 5, not 5A1.
Right.
Do I have a motion for those items 6A1 through 5?
Can we vote on three? Can we vote on three, is that possible?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, do you want to vote just on the three of them?
No, no, I'm asking you. Are we allowed to vote on number three?
Go back, under the agenda edits.
I don't have the agenda edits, that's, I'm looking at number three as, so I'm sorry.
I don't have that either.
Six, so.
It's on board docs.
No, I, I agree, I don't have it.
So the, the text of number 6A3 that I have is "Motion to approve payment of regular hourly wages for all hourly district employees during the closure of the district schools from March 16th to March 27th," is that still number three?
That's correct, mine.
So are we, are we putting the resolution forward instead of number three, is that what I'm hearing?
3, 4, 6A3. Looking for.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at 5A, yes, I'm looking at 6A3.
Correct, I think, though, if you go back to 5, under Finance Agenda, if you, if you go under the Agenda Edit, you will find that there was an agenda ended under Finance adding consent, which is item 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4, that I don't know that we addressed.
Oh, I don't believe we did.
No.
Okay, so let's back up from number six, then. Because we did only vote on 5A1. And so the Agenda Edit
There you go.
Is 5, 2 through 4 that are added, which is the lease of the, the room at the, at the, at the Birdsboro Elementary Center by Kenneth Templin. That was discussed at the last meeting. But the, this is the, the final wording of the lease. "Motion to approve purchase of learning system, LMS, from Discovery Education as recommended for the short-term COVID-19 response, as well as the long-term."
And I have a question about that one, too.
Okay, so we, so we'll, let me just get to the end, and then we'll make a, a motion, and then we'll ask questions, if that's okay. And then the last one is the motion to approve the 3/20/20 draft emergency resolution with the removal of the word "draft." And so if I could have a motion for those, that would be 5, 2 through 4.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now, now, Kevin, I believe, Mr. Strobel, I believe you said you had a question.
Yeah, I wanted to know what the total cost was on that, am I, am I reading that right? We're looking at over half of $569,000.
For what?
Discovery Education for the system.
Mr. McKnight, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, hey, hi, everybody. No, that's not, that's not the price, Kevin. The price for it on the three-year model is approximately $139,000 a year. And then, which we come in at right around $417,000 on that model. And if you break it out, student costs, you're looking at $42 a student. The point, I think that we should wrap our minds around here is we're in a situation right now, as we look to go through the model of continuing education for our teachers, we looked at three goals. One of them was that we wanted to make sure we were honoring our teachers and their expertise and giving them tools with which they could operate and deliver education to our students in a continuous model, not just an enrichment model, because we believe that this will not be the last time, unfortunately, we may come across this kind of scenario. Secondly, we wanted to make sure that the curriculum was the highest quality state of standard of line. And third, that it was economically feasible, sustainable, in the three-year model, meaning that it was consistently and cost-efficient, there wouldn't be big spikes to the district. Matter of fact, in year four and five, this would go down into the, I believe, seven, the low $70,000 range as the development element would begin to move offline after three years from discovery learning.
Right, is this, is the discovery learning for the teachers, then, is that correct? And there was this, or teaching, I teach online, and so, and I'm just looking at from the coronavirus standpoint. You know, is this something that we're gonna utilize if there's no virus in the next three years?
Yeah, yes, it is, and that's the important part, it's an integrated curriculum. And if you look at curriculums, Mr. Strobel, you're looking at basically something that we call horizontal curriculums, which happened in a school year from September to May. You're looking at vertical curriculum, how does it align kindergarten to 12? And then, like, the, the best curriculums, if you talk to quote-unquote curriculum nerds, you're talking about integrated curriculums. And that's what discovery learning is, and it allows our teachers ultimately to take the, this tool and use it consistently, not only in the short term, in a remote learning environment, but in a collective, in a long term, daily in their classrooms, as they can kind of think about it, pick different pieces out of discovery learning to enhance the things that they're trying to teach our students. So this is, that we would be using consistently going forward. We have a chance to, to really deliver something very dynamic for our teachers, who can then deliver for families going forward.
I understand, I just wasn't, I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just for the coronavirus piece. I didn't think that, I had, I'd heard you talk about these things in the past, I just was making sure that we all understood what we were voting on.
Yeah, I, I can see for the long term, I have questions, how are we going to use it on April the 1st? I really haven't seen any information about how this is going to be rolled out.
Well, we're, we're building, as you can imagine, air, you know, with some of this stuff, because we're in enrichment and, and enhanced engagement activities right now, Mr. Miller. So as the state will resolve some of the issues that allow us to deliver continuity of education, you'll see this come online. So we'll be having professional development coming forward for our teachers later this week, and then building out into, to next week on a remote platform, and then on this learning management system.
Does this, does this go across all students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, so it goes K to 12. And to give you a comparative analysis, getting just text materials, you know, instructional materials are very expensive, as you can imagine. Putting materials for three grades in science, for example, costs around $80,000 in textbooks. To put social studies, we were looking at $65,000 bill this year. So for $145,000, we basically would do three grades of social studies and science. By comparison, for $140,000, we're looking at giving our students integrated learning experience and our teachers a curriculum tool that they can deliver K, strongly K through 8, and predominantly through Algebra II and, and Math, for example. So you get Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, you know, Social Studies in the high school. You would also have Physics, Earth-Space Science, Chemistry, and Biology in the high school. So this would have a significant impact on our students, K to 12 through the system.
What about the Special Education, does that, does it take anything into account for that?
It does take some things into account, and I met with Mrs. McCowsky, our Director of Special Education, and we feel like this has resonance for 80% of our Special Education students who can be met with, for example, who are reading, if they need reading assistance, this tool lowers the Lexile level, which is the reading level for them, and can meet them on their needs, and it doesn't do it in a public way, it does it in a singular way where the teacher can do this and set it for the student. Student can have that personally, where another student next to them can be reading two grade levels above, and, and the reading material can be set that way for that student as well. It also does caption, it also reads aloud. So there's a whole host of, of tools that will help with the Special Ed, or what we call the itinerant, or learning support Special Education student. Our students who have greater needs, that's still an area that we're gonna have to solve. I don't think there's any singular tool out there that solves everything, but this goes a long way in supporting us in this kind of environment.
Preston, one last question for me, I can't speak for anybody else, is this ADA compliant, then?
I don't think it looks at it that way, Kevin, in terms of ADA compliance, see, but what, what we do work with is Mrs. McCowsky in terms of Special Ed and for what we call FATE, Free and Appropriate Education. So it, there, there's a host of probably 15 points where it does meet that standard. But when we get into some kind of challenges that we have with students who may need physical care, it certainly doesn't help there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be able to be used, and that was one of the things that we talked about, you know, during these weeks that we're off, you know, trying to gather a program that would be ADA compliant, that we could actually have the kids be learning while they're at home, kind of like the college kids learning at home. Does this meet, does this meet some of those requirements?
It meets, it meets all of those requirements, except for our extreme special education.
That's what, that's really what I was thinking, thank you.
Yes.
So we're anticipating that we'll be able to use this within the next couple of weeks to do online education.
Well, so the model we're looking at, the answer is yes, Steve, the model we're looking at is that we'll bring this thing online, and you have to give our, our teachers as strong as their time to work. We'll be looking at a guided practice model, like, for example, if this piece extends for a much longer period of time, as opposed to another two weeks, another two weeks, and so forth, through the end of the school year, we, we believe our teachers and their skill set with training will be delivering on this content. And then we'll be getting feedback with the teachers throughout the way, so that as we come along in the future, this will be part of the integrated learning system that we use in the district. So yes.
Okay, yeah, I just, and I, I know there are a bunch of challenges around that and getting it in place. I'm just curious about the April 1 start date for this.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we have to do, you know, to, to get them to come over, we have to, you know, get that contract for them to come in and help with the professional development in, in advance of April 1, so, yes.
Okay. And if, this is Dr. Cooper, if I can interject, the continuity of education actually stems off into two pillars. There's that of which is coined as review and enrichment, and then there's that of which is planned instruction. As we continue to move forward with these phases of the challenges that we have with the present situation, and completing our, what we coined in these first two weeks as Phase 1, where learning links have been provided to the students and parents of our community. You know, we were looking to move into Phase 2, which is a model where we can deliver these review and enrichment opportunities and a continuing education plan that is that, that's delivered by our, our staff members, our teachers, professional staff. Now, we do have to do some professional development towards the end of this week to give them the tools necessary to do that, being an online platform. And this is one of the pieces that they can utilize, that's gonna allow them access to a lot of robust content. Now, if this thing extends beyond the additional two weeks that the governor has put as an endpoint, over that course of the next two weeks, minus this week, we will be looking at ways that, how can we look to perhaps move into that instruct, that planning instruction model of the continuity of education, a piece of that, that second pillar. Okay.
And if I could just ask one question, this is Julia, this is Mrs. Olafson. I thought I had remembered that we already had money in the draft budget, or the preliminary budget for next year for an online learning. Whoever we had chosen a vendor, but not for this year, am I wrong about that, Mr. McKnight?
You're, we always have money allotted because we have a population of students partnered with BOL, so we spend about $80,000 a year there. On this model, so you're, you are correct in that we were going in a different direction next year. And to serve those eight, just 80 students in that model, we may have gone in a different direction, but at this opportunity, Mrs. Olafson, to comprehensive piece, we're gonna do this at about $11,000 more cost-effectively than we would have under our previous model.
Okay.
And we'll provide, and, and it's a much broader tool for, for all of our staff and students.
All right, that was the only question I had. Do any of the rest of the board have any other further questions?
I guess there is another question, yeah, as far as expense, I mean, this is a three-year contract, how much of it is going to be charged for this year, or how is that spread?
It's a great, great question, so we're having this debate right now. Hello?
No, actually, $41,000 next school year.
Right, so, so the conversation that, that we're in with, with right now is about the billing cycle of all of it. And then I'll defer to, to Ms. Haynes, because I know she and Dr. Cooper have talked about if we can access money this year and next year. So what I will tell you is that we have the lines budgeted for the future, but if there can be money used for this, that would be Mrs. Haynes and, and Dr. Cooper.
This is Dr. Cooper, we, we would go back and take a look and see, I mean, at this point in the contract, the first payment would not be due until the, the next year's contract. However, if there is some available funds this year, and we can put some money towards that. towards that.
Okay.
I'm reviewing the budget right now, so I'll be able to give a better answer to that within the next week or two.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board? For Miss?
Sorry, I didn't hear you. So, just so we're clear, we're voting on five, 5.2 through four, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Albright?
You're muted.
Is she there? Is anybody there?
Yes. Listen, I was just muted, and it went blank, hold on. I'm on the struggle bus.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Now you can mute again.
I will.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Right, six, two, okay. I got to figure out what to say.
Okay, so, now we'll go back to six, I, I obviously need to help as well. So, going back to six, and it works better if I use my mouse.
One through five.
Do I have a motion for any of that? Don't all talk at once.
Couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I didn't hear you, Julia.
Do we have a motion for any of that?
Somebody has their mic on that's close to you, Julia.
Oh, it might be me. So moved.
Mr. Miller, second? Oh, sorry, Julie.
That's okay.
B. Scott, I'll do it.
This also has his mic on, just, just calling you out there.
You're good now.
Do we have a second? I didn't catch that.
Yes, I'll, I'll second that.
I was too busy throwing shade at our, our attorney. And, so, do we have any discussion on these items? If we have none, I mean, I do, I think that a number, number three is probably a lot of the people that are listening want to know how we're going to vote on that. I understand that the emergency resolution would allow Mr. Dr. Cooper to do this without getting our approval beforehand, but I, I think it's a show of respect to our, our employees and of support to Dr. Cooper for us to vote one way or the other on that item, aside from the resolution. So I'm going to leave here, as long as, that's what I would like to do.
Julia, is this, are we going, we, we talked about this in the executive meeting, is that correct?
No, what we've discussed in the executive meeting was the legal ramifications of anything going forward beyond the, the two weeks.
Oh, I thought, I thought by giving him the ability, he can just take care of it, that there's no approval from the board for the two weeks.
That is correct, he could, but what I'm saying is that I would like to vote on this separately, we're here, and I would like to vote to give that certainty to our employees, and to give that vote of affirmation to this action.
And I, I agree with you, my, my, my confusion is, is that if we vote on it, the liability comes with that vote. By giving it to Dr. Cooper, the liability's not there.
The...
Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, the resolution as presented contains board authorization for this payment. So this payment is approved by the board, but it's limited to the March, you know, the first 10 days of the emergency school closure as directed by Governor Wolf. In the resolution, we listed March 16 through March 29, so it's in, in effect, the same time period. I mentioned earlier that it was a repeat, Ms. Olson's indicating that she just wants, she would like to keep it as a repeat on the agenda, just to give the board...
I got you.
...opportunity to affirm their support for the standard...
I got you, I got you. The, the outcome's the same, I just, I misunderstood, I'm sorry. I apologize, Julia.
Yep, it's all good, I keep muting my mic, so that we don't get the echo when somebody else speaks, so I was talking and nobody was hearing me. I know, that was the first time for everything. And, so, do, do we have any, any discussion on that, or any of the other items under, under number six? If we have none, then we can go ahead and vote, Mr. Scott?
So, Julia, I think what we're talking about right now is we're voting for 6.1 through 6.5, removing three, is that correct?
We're voting for 6.1 through 6.5, period.
Got it, got it, okay. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel? Mr. Strobel?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted.
No, it's all right. Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
I think that passes, yes.
All right, so, we're on to, we're, we're get, we're getting to the end, old business, numbers one and two, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
That was Ms. Leoni?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, if, if we have no, no comments on the, on the minutes, we can go ahead and vote, Mr., speak now? Okay.
Great.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Scott.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, are we moving on to new business? Motion to approve the submission of the school entity emergency declaration request to Pennsylvania Department of Education for the closure of the school district due to COVID-19, do I have a motion?
There may be a motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I'm going to defer to Dr. Cooper, just to give the, the, I'm going to hold him to 20 seconds as to why we need to, why, why we need to do this, just so, just so you guys understand what we're voting on.
All right, this, this is something that we're required to do by the state in, in the event of a ordered school closure, there's, there are things associated with this order, 80-day waivers, 90 days of student days, and various other things that are associated with it, so it's something that we have to petition to the PD in a simplified form, as what they have indicated to this point in time.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions? Mr. Scott?
Sure. Okay, I am looking, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, our last item is presentation by the public on any items on the agenda or any other item, and just let me be clear that, you know, especially if, if the quest, if the concerns or comments are about the situation we currently find ourselves in, we might not have an answer for you, I might not want to give an answer without at least finding out if the thing I want to say is correct, so I will be taking notes, and I just, I just wanted, I just wanted parents and staff and, and members of the community to know that before we take, we open the floor to comments. So, does anybody have a raised hand? I'm going to unmute you, I'm going to try to. How do I do that? Yeah, Ms. Hicks.
Hit the unmute.
Okay, there we go. Okay, I've muted, Mrs. Amy Hicks?
Yes, Amy Hicks, Representative from Danube Education Association. I would just like clarification on the open school counselor position. That position has been posted for, well, it has yet to be posted, it's been open for weeks. My concern is that we are at a time right now when we have a great deal of students in crisis, we have a record number of kids at the middle school level that are being referred for staff referrals, and we'd be moving them up to the high school. My concern would be whether or not that position is going to be posted and filled. Dr. Cooper's earlier comments made it seem as though perhaps that position was being real, reallocated for the IEP facilitator position, I'm just seeking clarification on that.
There, I mean, I can, I can respond to that, as we take a look at the retirements and resignations in, throughout the district, and reallocation of resources, I don't think it was indicated that, that IEP facilitator was replacing that specific position. There's, there's a lot of moving parts that are being taken into consideration, resources in that MTS structure.
The position's been open since March 2nd, but not yet posted?
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm asking if it's been vacated since March 2nd, why the delay in posting?
Because there was not any action on the resignation of it until this evening.
I see, all right, thank you for clarification.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hicks. I have Lori, was there a hand raised? Laura, I think I just muted you.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, um, oh, okay, so the hand is still raised from earlier?
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So, I just want to clarify, so will the hourly employees' payment is from March 16th to the, what is that, the 28th?
7th, which I think is the Friday.
Okay. 27th. So, if we're shut down longer than that, what happens?
That is going to have to be something that will need to be decided, we only, I mean, we only received notification that the, the shutdown would extend for another almost two weeks, like, right before this meeting.
Yeah, stay until 13th.
Like, as I said before, there, there should be some communication going out tomorrow to everybody, know about what we've already approved, and what next, next steps look like, because honestly, we don't know yet.
Okay, and thank you very much for that, I, I should have said that first.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Um, this is another question, as a parent, in the upcoming, I'm having a difficulty right now transitioning my son from high school to, he's in special education, life skills, high school, I'm having a difficult time through transitioning him out of high school, he'll be graduating next year, 2021, so, because a transition coordinator is non-existent at Boone.
Yeah, I, I hear you, this is a little bit more specific than what we can deal with right here. I did say at the beginning that I would reach out to you, and I did, I do intend to do that, so, I will do that in the next couple of days, if that's, if that's okay.
Wonderful.
And so we, so we will talk more fulsomely about that, okay?
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. All right, now, unless somebody changed their mind, um, I know, I see, oh, there we go, I got one, I got one, Mr. Sweet?
Hello, actually, my wife and I, Wendy Sweet, are on together, 1856 Old Sweet Road.
Hi.
Hair talk.
Hello, thank you again for all you guys are doing in these unprecedented, as is the Bud Word time, thank you so much, School Board, thank you so much, administrators, I appreciate that. I had a clarification unrelated to normal chaos, the POS service changeover that will be happening, there was question at last board meeting on clarification of the date and the accepted minutes state, ending and the end of the 2021-2022 school year, when would the new POS system for the cafeteria go into place?
That would go into place on July 1st, we will be running side-by-side from whenever we're able to get back in the buildings, and they're able to start doing things. We're going to run side-to-side until the end of the school year, and then starting 7-1, we'll start bringing in as far as part of the training to make sure that the, I guess this nutrition group that was already voted on, they will be being trained as we go through it.
So then...
Starting 7-1, it'll be for next school year.
So, the date and the accepted minutes is incorrect?
I'm going to have to go back and look to see...
I'm sorry.
If, if it turns out that we made an error, we will vote on, on an edit at the next, at the next voting meeting.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry.
No, don't be, if that's the, if that's the small, if that's the big thing on my list of things to do today, thank you very much.
Sure.
Do we have anybody else with their hand raised? This, running a meeting this way is so weird. Do I see, yes? No, I'm going to say it's no, I'm going to say, no, it's not. I'm going to say, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, so, do we have a motion to adjourn? From the board?
First motion.
Motion!
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion.
Try to be first.
I actually have something, I think, I don't know if I, did we say that there was an executive session? I forgot to say that there was an executive session before this to discuss litigation and personnel issues, and I apologize for not saying that, we had it before, normally we have it after, but this was already going to be a bit of a... So can I have the motions again to adjourn?
Go ahead, Beverly.
I'd like to do that, yes.
Well, do it!
All right.
I'm doing it!
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.